I'm assuming there's gonna be another.
Mm-hmm.
It's not candid to you.
Oh, yeah, no, no usual thing. It'll be a thing, yes, they will.
Then I'll be expected to be there for the first five minutes.
Mm-hmm. Be there for light refreshments.
We all set for votes?
What are we serving?
I don't know.
I'll say. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to open the Laconia City Council meeting. Call it to order. And as usual, we will please stand to salute our American flag. Councilman Littman will lead the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recording secretary, would you please call the council?
Councilor Doyle?
Here.
Councilor Bounds?
Absent.
Councilor Littman?
Present.
Councilor Bear?
Present.
Councilor Hamel?
Present.
I'm present also.
Councilor Baldick, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Staff in attendance this evening is, at the head table, Scott Myers, City Clerk Donna Wooderman, and Finance, as the Finance Director. Okay, council proclamations. There are no council proclamations this evening. Acceptance of the minutes of the previous meeting. Does anybody have any changes or additions or omissions? Hearing none, we will accept those minutes as written.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Woodman.
I'd like to be recognized on the agenda tonight. Item 20C is Resolution 2017-30 relative to the Lake Ridge, New Hampshire railroads and trail study. I'd like to make a motion to table that agenda item for the benefit of those who may have come in tonight to know what's going on. And then I would, I would note that under, it's my understanding, under items where the public gets to comment if someone wants to say something about it, because there's been quite a bit of conversation in the community about it, they would have that opportunity if they want to stay and say something. But my motion is to table that on the basis that we've gotten some significant feedback that we need to incorporate before considering it again, and that if we were to take it up again, if and when, that it would be done with plenty of notice.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining. So we have four yays and one nay. Temporary traffic order. That is, the staff report is the, on page number seventeen. Temporary traffic order 2017-17. Holiday parade being held on Saturday, November 25th, 2017, at 3:30 PM. Do I have a motion? I move to approve the temporary traffic order 2017-17 for the holiday parade on November 25th, 2017.
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Hamel, second by Councilor Littman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, raise your hand. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. All right, that takes care of that. Citizen, now, citizen comments for matters not on the agenda.
Did you skip the?
Which one?
Eight B.
Eight B.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we had two reports on that. State report funding request for the Salvation Army and use of a peachy beach parking lot and clubhouse for annual turkey plunge on November 18th, 2017, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Bear, second by Councilor Littman. No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Let's see. Now, citizen comments for matters not on the agenda this evening. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Come up and state your name and address and go to it.
This is all different. Charlie, St. Clair, Laconia, 792 North Main.
There we go.
I just, we just had an election, obviously, here in the city. And knowing how quickly time flies, and it'll be January before we know it, I wanted to take the time to come in and personally, on behalf of myself and Jennifer and the association, thank both Brenda and Ava for all the work they've done, not only for Motorcycle Week, but for the city. Haven't always agreed with them over the years, but that's, that's immaterial. I think they've done a wonderful job for, for Laconia. And I just want to, just, I guess this is like going on record, I want to thank both of you for all the work you've done. I know you're gonna hear that from a million people, but I want you to hear it from me because I certainly have come up, stood here before and made my opinions known. So thank you both very much. I was, I was thinking, maybe I should bring flowers, but I said, that's too weird. But anyway, thank you both very much. And I, and I obviously look forward to working with the two new councilors amongst everybody else in the coming year. So again, thank you both very, very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you. All right, there aren't any interviews this evening? And no nominations, appointments, or reelections? Okay. Communications? There are no communications this evening. Public hearings, only Toledo, we got plenty of those, public hearings. On page twenty-four, I believe. Turn the page over here. Yes, page twenty-four. Public hearing on a proposed application for the Community Development Finance Authority for up to $500,000 in community development block grant funds. The city will retain some of the funds for administration costs and subgrants, the benefits of the remainder of the Belknap County Economic Development Council incorporated for equipment for the Colonial Theater, redevelopment project located at 609 Main Street, Laconia, New Hampshire, 03246. The majority of the job created with this project will be low and moderate income. Do I have a motion? Do I have a?
You're gonna open the public hearing?
We're gonna open the public hearing at 7:08.
Mayor Pro Tem, if I could, I don't see Donna Lane, who typically handles this for the CDBG, so if you'd like, I can read a paragraph into the record for each of these three public hearings that we have.
Yes.
Okay, and her stint, okay. So, community development block grants are available to municipalities through the New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority. Up to $500,000 annually is available on a competitive basis for public facility and housing projects. Up to $500,000 for projects must directly benefit low and moderate income persons. Up to $12,000 per study is available for planning grants. And again, as you read on the title, this is something that the mayor had outlined a month or two ago towards the equipment fitting out for the Colonial Theater project.
Okay, so we open the public hearing at 7:08. And if anybody in the audience would like to speak to that, it's time to come on up. Don't all come at once. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 7:09. Great. Twenty-five. Public hearing for housing and community development plan. We can, that's another public hearing. We'll open it at 7:09.
Would you enclose it?
And if you'd like, again, Mayor Pro Tem, I can fill in for Donna. So, on this, although the project does not involve any displacement or relocation of persons or businesses, if the city were to undertake a CDBG project which involved displacement or relocation, they would follow this plan. The plan outlines the measures they would take to find compatible, comparable, suitable housing for persons or businesses displaced or relocated.
Okay. Do I have a, a motion to accept that?
Do you want to open the public hearing?
Okay, we open the public hearing at 7:10. Anybody in the audience would like to speak to this issue? Please come forward, state your name and where you live. I don't see anybody moving, so we'll close the public hearing at 7:10. All right. One more. Number twenty-six. Public hearing and residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan. So I'd like to open that public hearing at 7:10. Anyone in the audience would like to speak to that issue? Please come forward. No one is moving, we'll close the public hearing at 7:11. Number twenty-seven. Public hearing, a resolution of 2017-25 relative to authorizing the city manager to accept and expand grants on behalf of the city in the amount of $9,227.04 from the Laconia District Driving Grant Project, number 318-18B-012. Open the public hearing at 7:11. Anyone would like to speak to that issue? Come on up, take your name and address. And I don't see anybody moving, we'll close it at 7:11. Another public hearing, a resolution 2017-25 relative to authorizing the city manager to accept and expand all grants on behalf of the city on the amount of $9,227.04 from the Laconia District Driving Grant Project, number 318-18B-012.
I think that was the one we just covered.
Is that the one we just covered?
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
No, there are five of them and they look alike.
Number twenty-nine, right?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-eight?
Twenty-six.
Public hearing, resolution 2017-26 relative to authorizing the city manager to accept and expend a grant on behalf of the city to the amount of $13,811 from the Laconia DWI Patrol Grants Project 308-18B-017.
And Mayor Pro Tem, if I could add for the record that these five public hearings, the notice of public hearing was made in the October 26th, 2017 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun, Laconia City Hall, Community Center, and Laconia Public Library, as well as the SAU. And that'll apply for all five of these grants, that's where they were advertised and posted.
Okay. Anyone, we opened this one up at 2:13. Anyone in the audience would like to come forward and speak to this issue? Hearing, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 2:13, at 7:13. And that was number twenty-eight, right?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
That's what that one.
Oh, I get page twenty. Okay. Next is the public hearing on a resolution 2017-27 relative to authorizing the city manager to accept and expend grant on behalf of the city of the amount of $1,031.50 from the Laconia Radar Grant Project 315-18B-014, excuse me, 041. Okay, I'll open that public hearing at 7:14. Anyone who would like to come and speak to that issue, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 7:14. Okay, next, number, this one here. Public hearing of resolution 2017-28 relative to authorizing the city manager to accept and expend a grant on behalf of the city in the amount of $12,671.77 from the Laconia Step Grant Project 315-18B-022. Open the public hearing at 7:15. Anyone would like to speak to that issue? Please come forward. Seeing none, we will close it at, at 7:15. Okay. This is the next one. Number twenty-nine?
Yep.
Okay. Public hearing of resolution 2017-29 relative to authorizing the city manager to accept and expend a grant on behalf of the city in the amount of $7,381.63 from the Laconia Variety Checkpoints Grant Project 308-18B-089. I'll open the public hearing at 7:16. Anybody would like to come and speak to that issue? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, we'll close it at, at 7:16. All right, next is a public hearing on resolution 217-28. Come, this is different.
That's what, because we're in a boardroom.
Public hearing on the date of the city fire codes. That's the one we're looking at?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Does anybody have any?
Open the hearing.
We'll open the hearing at 7:17. Anyone have any discussion or would like to speak to this issue?
Yes, Councilor. Suggest the fire chief address us on that, if that's all right.
Yeah. Have the chief come up and give a brief summary, and then we'll be addressing this under unfinished business, as we will all of these other grants as well.
Good evening. So the first part of the ordinance will allow us to bring the city ordinance into date with the state codes. As the state changes fire codes, we would always have to have a formal meeting, so this way here, by changing the wording, it brings us always up to date with the state. The second part of the code would change the requirement for, right now, we allow options for cluster developments and planned unit developments. They either have to put sprinklers in or fire alarm systems. And historically, the underground utilities for the fire alarm systems have been a maintenance nightmare, so we're looking to eliminate the requirement for the fire alarm system and just require the residential sprinkler system. And as you know, the council adopted the sprinkler requirement back in 2007, and I always remember, Mayor, when you said, today we're planting a new tree, and it'll take several years, but it'll blossom into a full-grown tree, and we'll have a better protected city. And this basically will bring us in line so that cluster developments, as well as large single-family homes, and as well as long dead-end streets are sprinkled.
Just anecdotally, if I could, the chief has shared with me, and we've had some residents come in over the past year or so, on some of these developments that had required the underground wiring, that take in some cases many years to build out. A lot of times, by the time the developer is ready to turn the system to, over to the homeowners association, there are challenges, and things are aged, and a lot of the infrastructure's been underground, and it's really become a logistic nightmare for a lot of these homeowners associations as they're taking something on that is, has got some age to it, and some, in some cases, some problems to it. So I think that this is forward-looking, allowing something that's much more accessible in the long run, should be saving money for those residents.
And in addition, it'll make the properties much safer with the whole goal in mind of saving lives and property. So smoke detectors detect fires, the sprinkler systems will actually put the fires out. So it's a significant improvement in the protection of the city.
And again, these are for the cluster developments or the tightly, you know, congested areas, these are not for all residential properties.
Yeah, Chief? The new added things in here, is this a local thing or is this a state rule?
Sorry, Council, but if you could point out what you're referencing?
Well, I mean, it says city of Laconia ordinances.
Yes.
So, page eighty-one, number two. So this is, this is being?
This is strictly a?
Located locally.
Strictly a city of Laconia ordinance. I would anticipate it will become a state, part of the state fire code. But my concern is that by the time the state adopts it, we'll be four, five, six years old, and we'll have had a lot of construction already completed that will not have this protection. By the way, the, the cost for the sprinkler system versus the fire alarm system, it's almost a zero cost, there's no, no real difference because of the underground utilities required for the fire alarm system. So they'll eliminate the major fire alarm systems, underground utilities, still be able to use the domestic water that they already have in the home, so there's really no increased cost to the property owner or the developer.
You're, you're still gonna have a fire alarm system, other than it's gonna alarm outside the building?
Right, it'll still be a smoke alarm.
So they still need some kind of system?
They'll still need smoke detection, correct.
But it's a little more than just that with it, with an outside alarm, correct?
This will have a flow switch with an outside bell, so if the flow switch does activate, then a bell will ring outside, but it won't be an elaborate fire alarm system. And this is almost identical to the ordinance that was adopted in 2007 for the 4,000 square foot homes and homes on the 1,000-foot-long dead ends.
Okay, what about the, the one that, on that same page up above, where it's 18-3.4.1? It says apartment buildings with more than two stories or more than three living units.
That will stay.
Is that, okay, that's, that was always, always there?
That was always there, yes.
So basically, it's, the, the big thing is that, I don't know, that must be new then, number two on that page, correct?
Yes. We gave them the option, and we, as hot as we tried to explain to them, they, they were better off with the sprinklers, most of them just opted to go with the underground utilities, and...
So they, they can go either way?
This is gonna eliminate the underground fire alarm system, and they will have to put no choice but sprinklers. And it only impacts, obviously, anything that's approved, comes in after the vote.
So they had a, have you had a public hearing on this to see what the contractors feel about that, or?
Most contractors that are going along with the sprinkler systems, I've talked with, are pretty neutral on it because of the fact that the fire alarm systems were fairly expensive, the sprinkler systems, especially if they go with a, a type that uses the domestic piping, the overall expense is relatively small. They probably spend more money on landscape cost or landscape sprinklers than they would on fire sprinklers.
And this is the public hearing that we're holding right now for residents, construction professionals to be coming in and speaking to this.
Council Littman?
I think what Council Hamel is getting at, just when we've adopted other things related to this in terms of just the level of publicity that people who are in the development mode, that we give them a, a good chance to, to bring things forward. And I don't know if what you're getting at, Council Hamel, is you'd like to, like, leave that out for maybe an extra period of time to make sure there's no comments that we get that we might want to consider.
On the, on the cluster housings now?
Yes.
They're not required a sprinkler.
Right now, they have two options. They can install a fire alarm system, or they can install sprinkler systems. They can pick either or.
What are they generally picking?
Some are going with the sprinkler system because they're accustomed to putting sprinklers in, and they understand the cost difference. The ones that haven't done it are opting out for the fire alarm systems, and then they're finding out, as the manager said, down the road, the underground utilities for the fire alarm systems are failing, and...
So, so this would take effect on, on just new stuff after we?
Correct.
If it's approved or not tonight?
Yes.
And not anything that's already approved that hasn't been constructed yet, that would be grandfathered? Can you speak to, we had a neighborhood group who came in and requested you, in your capacity as the chief, spoke to them about acknowledging that they were discontinuing?
Correct.
Their?
So we have a large subdivision in town that was built with the underground utilities, and over the past, the project's probably about eight years old, and over the past three years, they've put thousands of dollars in trying to get the underground utilities for the fire alarm system back in service. And every time they fix it, another section would break up. The only way to fix it is to literally rip the streets open, rip the underground utilities out, and put all new underground utilities in. And we've granted three waivers now to three of these subdivisions to completely just shut those systems down because it was getting too expensive to repair.
And that was the expense on the homeowners, not the city, but they've come to us, and we've granted them the waiver to, in a sense, shut down what was a condition because of just the failure of the cost to it?
So they have no monitoring or?
They have no monitoring systems. And essentially, these properties are protected in accordance with state code now. The ordinance that required the sprinkler system, that ordinance dates back long before I was here, I believe it was Chief Judkins that actually put that ordinance into effect. And it is, it's, it's overkill in regards to what's required in these homes.
In, in, something you said kind of caught my ear. What did you say about a dead-end street, or did you say that?
We have an ordinance that if you build a street in excess of 1,000 feet long, the properties on that street have to be sprinkled. That was adopted in 2007 with the other ordinances.
Okay.
And that was because of the fact that the dead-end streets had limited ways in and out, so if you lost control of the main road, fire protection, we wouldn't be able to get in there. So that was one of the trade-offs to allow these long streets.
So if these developments are not on city water, I mean, could there be some, there could be some that?
There's one that's, there's one that's private water, but it has residential sprinkler systems.
Yes. That's, is that required for them to build some kind of a system that, with the wells or whatever, to?
They can do, they can do a two-ways council, they can actually put a system in off the well of the home. The flow of water for these properties is about 11 gallons a minute for the fire suppression system. It's not a sprinkler system like you see in this building or in a mill. It's a residential system which is designed at 11 gallons a minute. So most underground wells, if the well can't do it, then they put a small holding tank in with a small air compressor on it, and that in turn supplies the water. These systems are not designed to operate for long periods of time, they're designed to operate early in a fire, get water on the fire, allow people to get out, allow the fire department to get in and do the job.
You have a question, tell me.
Just a comment, you know, we had a number of years back adopted sprinkling of private residents over a certain square footage, then a law was subsequently passed that had us calibrated down, am I recalling it correctly?
Yes.
I guess the, the, two things I hear here, one is that in terms of these underground systems, they're a problem not only for the homeowner, but for, for possibly the city in terms of responding to false alarms and the like, which is an expense that...
Yeah, the, one of the particular properties, we were probably going there once a week. So we ended up shutting the system down, giving them notice to repair it, and that's when it became obvious that repairing it was not gonna be a sound decision.
Now, a facility that wants to connect to the fire department, whether it be a healthcare facility or some other, they still will have the option to?
Yes, they will. Yes, they will.
Is that what the problem is up on North Street with those lights keep blinking?
Yes, sir.
On both of those developments?
Yep.
Yes.
No, you finish, because mine hasn't got anything to do with it.
So I guess the, the question is, is, I guess after we passed it, we got some feedback back, I guess asking you and the city manager, do you feel comfortable enough to have us take this up at the earliest point or to leave it out there for?
Procedurally, we could continue the public hearing if you wanted. We've already advertised, but rather than closing it tonight, you could continue it to the next meeting. And maybe there's a story that shows up in the media, and people who hadn't been following it maybe have an opportunity. Or you could accept this as your public hearing tonight, and when you get to the item under unfinished business, you can table it then and encourage anybody who's got additional comments to come out and speak during citizens' comments for items on the agenda at the next meeting. So either way would be appropriate, and you could use this as your required public hearing, but delay a vote for two weeks.
Yes, Councilor.
Chief, I, I just want to know if you were sticking around for the whole meeting, because I have something not related to this, but if you were here, I was gonna bring up something.
I can.
Okay.
I'm not concerned about who's playing football tonight. Any other questions for me right now?
I guess that's it, uh, chief. Anyone else who'd like to come up and speak to the issue? If not, we'll close the public hearing at seven twenty-nine. Oh. Where are we here anyway? Thirteen G?
Thirteen B.
What's that?
Which, we're on, uh.
Presentation.
Actually, we're on fourteen.
Fourteen.
Presentations in the.
Oh, we got all of these.
Mayor's report.
What do you have?
I think we've, I think we've covered these items, we're up to here, presentations, fourteen.
Something's not figuring out here for some reason.
You're good.
You're here.
All right there. There are no presentations. So that takes care of that one. Mayor's report. I don't have any reports other than I hope it's gonna warm up out there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, counsel.
Um, under land and buildings portion, I would, uh, like for us, I'll make a motion that we remove sixteen D three. Uh, the discussion regarding city-owned vendor space on the boardwalk as it relates to renting food vendors.
I'll second that.
Sixteen.
Yeah, sixteen D, the second item.
Discussion regarding the owner of the spaces on boardwalk?
Yes, I'd like to remove that, make a motion.
You want to remove it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm making a motion to remove it.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any further comments? If none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried.
And Mr. Mayor, along that same vein, I'd like to remove item sixteen C four. Concerns regarding city dog code, chapter one thirteen, animals as it pertains to restraint of dogs to an owner's property.
Okay, sixteen C dash four. You wanna remove that one also?
Please.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have a?
We need a second now. A second, yeah.
Take your pick, whichever one you want.
Henry seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, take care of that one. All right, now we still keep going down the, the whole thing here, right?
Well, we're done with committees.
Takes care of this one? This thing here, this thing there. I don't know where we are.
That's under the city manager's name.
Yeah.
He's coming up next.
All right, where are we here?
Seventeen. I think on seventeen, right?
Eighteen you want to, no liaison, do eighteen.
Citizen requests, liaison reports, number seventeen.
It's not there.
Nothing here, okay? Eighteen, citizen requests to comment on current agenda items. Ask for any citizen that would like to come forward, speak to anything on tonight's agenda? Don't see any. Okay, do I have to, do I have to have a motion on that?
No.
Nineteen, city managers' report. There we go.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So you have two reports in your packet for the first meeting of the month. I'll turn your attention to page thirty-three. At the top of the page, we start with the net gain in construction value from building permits. That's one of the components that we use to calculate with our tax cap assessment. Uh, the assessing year again runs April first to March thirty-first, so year to date on that calendar. We're running just about two million dollars ahead in value over the prior year, so we're at fifteen point seven million. Comparatively, two years ago, we were sitting at twenty-seven million, so a little better than last year, but still down a bit from where we were two years ago. Under the fire and rescue call data in October, and this parallels also to, uh, some police calls. Uh, I'll probably start off generally speaking about the, uh, the significant storm that we had at the end of October. A large wind event that was, uh, expected, um, but I don't think anybody expected it to the level that it ended up, uh, being. I think people originally thought in the forecast called it to be more of a coastal event with, uh, larger challenges there and, and maybe some wind gust inland, but it really turned out to be an entire statewide event as far as power went. Um, EverSource had tagged it from their end as the fourth largest outage in New Hampshire in, in their history. Uh, Maine got hit even harder in terms of, uh, a percent of, uh, customers without power. Um, so it was a significant event. EverSource knew early on to it that, uh, or on into it, that this was gonna be a multi-day restoration project. Uh, and it did turn out to be, uh, the bulk of it probably restored within three days, but there were, uh, a, a large population that were into a fourth and fifth day. And if you're one of those folks who are in that fourth and fifth day, um, it, it gets old and tired real quick there. But, uh, certainly think EverSource as a, as a company and our specific, uh, community liaison and Donna Keely was very responsive in regular communication, uh, with Chief Erickson, with our Public Works Director. Certainly a shout out to our crews in Public Works, Police, Fire, Parks and Recreation, um, you know, other staff, support staff through various, uh, city buildings and stuff. Um, it was a, um, it was a response that had a lot of calls. Fortunately, um, not a lot of significant major issues, uh, in Laconia beyond the power outage, some limbs down, uh, some extra emergency calls. Um, the weather was relatively mild, uh, so it wasn't a need for a shelter, but certainly, um, a, a great effort by all of our employees. So I think that's a long way of saying that reflects into the number of emergencies in the November column, I'm sorry, the October column there because there were significant calls coming across all departments.
Scott, I was gonna jump in because that was what I was gonna bring up at the end of the meeting and it involves the chief. And I, you said we didn't need to use shelters. Uh, several people have spoken to me about the fact they were very nervous not having electricity, particularly the elderly. And they're not aware, uh, they're always saying, well, where is the shelter? And I, the place that we use is the middle school. Well, they say, how do we know that it's open? You don't know it's open if you don't have electricity and you can't hear the radio, et cetera, et cetera. Um, do, have we thought of some way of communicating so that people are aware from day one? If they have a problem, where they can go? You know, you have the two-one-one number, is that correct? And nobody even heard the two-one-one number. The public, if we could have something in the paper, I mean, a, a little squib every day at the top, you know, or something. But the shelter doesn't do any good if people don't know that we have one or where it is or how they can get there.
Uh, and we did not even open a shelter, counsel.
No, I, I realize that, but there were a lot of people that, uh, quite a few, there were some sick elderly people in a trailer park without electricity or service. And they were wondering, you know, what to do or where to go and I, I can't tell them where to go.
Yeah, the simplest thing, if they, if they need assistance, they call the fire station or the police station requesting assistance. And that would not be a nine-one-one call, that would be, you know.
It'd be the two-one-one call or the straight.
They could call two-on-one, but the best thing to do is call the police station or the fire station directly. Just say as an example, I have a medical machine and I need power. We actually accommodated several residents that needed, um, their oxygen equipment regenerated. We literally brought them to the fire station and just plugged them into the E O C and let their, um, machines re-energize or recharge the batteries. We added two people that we actually gave them oxygen cylinders to hold them over until they could get their own oxygen cylinders back. But, uh, simplest thing that anybody can do is have a battery-operated phone, I mean, a battery-operated radio. We try to urge that through our press releases throughout the year. 'Cause if we are gonna open a shelter, it would go out on the radio stations and it would go out on M U R. Obviously, Facebook is of no value if we don't have internet.
Yeah.
We have the ability to put words on, I think, twelve or sixteen of the signs throughout the city. The problem with that was is that most of those signs had no power, so there was no sign, uh, words going up on the, the bulletin boards. So, yeah, if, if they're in trouble, my suggestion is they call the police station or fire station. But we coordinated with Belmont, Meredith, Laconia and Guilford, and amongst the towns, there was no need to open a shelter, um, especially because of the temperature.
We were fortunate.
And if you remember though, last year, we opened a shelter in the middle of a winter storm and nobody came.
Only were a few.
Historically though, I, I've opened shelters in Laconia probably eight times in sixteen years and in general, nobody comes. So we've discussed just opening up a warming station and a charging station. Though, um, and that's just simply, you can go to the library, that's a warming station, it's also considered a cooling station. The senior center, if it has power, and most of downtown does have power. But, uh, to get the message out when there's no power, there's no simple solution without going, literally going door to door. But, um.
And I think the chief summed it up well, where we didn't have a large demand, but on individual calls, like for the oxygen, we did respond to them and we did find resources, um, for them. But again, because of the temperature, so I don't think we wanna get to a point of any time there's a power outage, you know, the assumption is we're gonna open a shelter because, um, you know, some are, are short-term and some are longer term. And again, are roads available for people to get out and, you know, get places is a, is an issue. Um, you know, if you've got a, a big blizzard event, are you encouraging people to leave at the height of the storm to drive to a shelter or not? That's a consideration. Um, so every, every storm is unique, but we certainly, you know, try to get information out ahead of time. But I think your point taken that in general, um, you know, New Hampshire Department of Emergency Management, Homeland Security does the, does the, you know, it's the ready dog mascot and are you ready and have your kit and what should you have? And we all, and I'm as guilty as the next one. We all kinda hear it, we go, oh yeah, you should have two gallons of water per person and you ought to have a battery pack and you ought to have food. But I bet you if I asked, and I'm not asking, but if I asked for hands raised around the table as to who really has, not you, chief, you're not at the table. But, but who has that in a ready spot where you've got everything on the checklist that's recommended so that you can be prepared? Most people probably have some beverages available, they've got some, you know, cans of, of tuna fish or some, you know, deli meats. But, you know, then you get into, you're not wanting to open your refrigerator if you don't have power because you don't wanna risk boiling the food and there's a lot of things. So, um, we are there to respond on a, on a larger basis if needed. In this particular case, whether calls came into City Hall, police, fire, wherever, we did respond individually. Um, but I think the chief has said it right and the best bet, just make a call and, and, you know, we will certainly assess it.
Information in that mitigation, uh, book and everything is just gonna update it. But the general public as a rule has, you know, doesn't have the information.
Yeah, and as much as we make it available, whether it's through press releases or through mailings, um, the general public generally ignores it until the day of the storm.
Yeah.
You know, I, my wife called me up, I, I left the house at twelve-thirty that night. She called me up and she says, you know, there's no water. And I said, well, go down, sell her and there's that yellow bucket, there's your water. She laughed and I said, well, and then next week, don't forget to refill it.
Yeah.
But, um, you know, you have to think about taking care of yourself and it is definitely an issue as you get older in life. I would suggest to the counselors though, 'cause I would tend to suspect that people may reach out to counselors as you just stated. You can easily call me at any hour of the day or the night on my cellphone and, uh, if you know of people, we will definitely help them.
So the best thing to do is call either the police station or the fire station?
If you think you need, if you need emergency assistance, it's one number, one number only, nine-one-one.
Right.
But if you just have no power and you need help, call the fire station, the police station direct. Generally speaking, when we start coordinating, we notify each agency. I always tell the police department, we are open bringing a shelter. Or I tell them, as you get requests, take phone numbers, addresses, conditions, how many people, and keep a list so that we can make a determination, do we need to open a shelter? And we're not gonna open a shelter for a handful of people. It has to be a significant number of people.
You have to mobilize quite a bit of stuff to open one of those.
Opening a shelter is a significant operation, um, takes several hours. And depending on the conditions, it could mean plowing the parking lot before you can even get to the shelter.
I can tell you the biggest demand that we saw those first couple of days was morning coffee, and I'm not making light of it, but it was morning coffee. Gasoline, because without power, people who hadn't filled up their tanks are scrambling and there were, there were long lines at the gas stations and char- charging of cell phones. And again, it's the lesson of what do you do in advance of a storm? You make sure that you've got charged and backup packs that are ready to go.
I have a hand crank charger.
I almost thought it was back in, what is it, the early seventies when they had the gas embargo, whatever that was? I mean, I, I never seen so many lines of the gas stations around here.
Uh, there was a significant number of gas stations.
That didn't have.
They didn't even have gas, some of them, they all ran out.
We actually had a conversation with our supplier and, um, made sure that he kept refilling his tanks at night, otherwise we were gonna commandeer his facility. 'Cause it was critical.
Politely commandeer it, we weren't.
But, but we had to make sure we had fuel for Public Works, Police, Fire, in the area towns, we're all going to the same.
Did the new generator work well?
Yeah, we were three days without power at the fire station in the WIS and, uh, two inches of fuel was all we used, out of a three-foot deep tank. It was, it was a little loud for the people behind us.
Well, the temperature wasn't too bad outside, so we were lucky.
We were fortunate.
Yeah, if that, if that event had happened in February, we would've opened a shelter, there's no question about it, because of the duration of the storm.
Thank you.
I appreciate your comments, counsel, thank you.
So we'll continue on with the reports on page thirty-four. We've got property tax collection and motor vehicle registrations. Both of those are trending very favorably so far against our projections. And on the bottom of page thirty-seven, we have boat taxes and we actually, uh, are running fairly well ahead of last year's pace for the, uh, the post-July one boat registrations. Um, I'm probably pretty sure there's gonna be very little boat registrations taking place the rest of the month of November based on where we are with the temperatures here. Uh, on the economic development report, uh, starting on page thirty-eight, again, we continue to be at very favorable numbers. Unemployment, Laconia County, Concord, Manchester, the state, you can see a slight uptick from August. That's a normal this time of year when some of the seasonal positions, uh, wind down. And on page thirty-nine, you can see that we're nine months through the year as far as the consumer price index, the C P I. I'm a little disappointed Counselor Bones isn't here, so we go into the C P I a little bit more tonight, but I'll catch him up on it. But we're, uh, running about two point one percent annualized year to date, so we've got, uh, we've got three more months of data. I believe the October number will be out, um, uh, by this Friday. Uh, one other piece of business I have for you, um, with my report tonight, I am reappointing, uh, Robert Harrington, Bob Harrington, to the Lacony Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. Um, Bob has, uh, been, uh, a great supporter of the Housing Authority and also a great, uh, board commission member. Uh, is very solid with the numbers, has a great background and their executive director, Dick Weaver, uh, let me know that with this reappointment, which is a five-year term, once that term is up in twenty-twenty-two, Bob Harrington will have served fifty years.
Oh, my God.
As a volunteer, as a Housing Authority Commissioner and, uh, he's active and engaged and a great asset for us and the community. So congratulations to Bob and happy to reappoint him.
It's pretty close to a commitment, huh?
There you go.
Another career, right? I have a couple of questions if that's okay. Um, where do we stand on the grievances of the fire department, 'cause some go back to two thousand and fifteen?
Yeah, um, there's a couple of them are just stalled and it's just a matter of getting together and having attorneys review. Um, as you can see, they're not, uh, they're not actively running up the, the meter, if you will. So a couple of them just take some time to schedule around the various groups and run through the process. Uh, we go through a, a grievance hearing and then you, you've gotta submit and you bring arbitrators and attorneys try to work it out first, so we avoid some of that cost. So, uh, it just takes a little while, but.
Okay. Um, under the, uh, fire, fire stabilization account, that's zero now, what, uh, it was, uh?
We transferred all the money out as part of the budget process.
This past July one is the year that we drained the remainder of those funds, as we said we were going to. So we transferred that out as part of balancing the budget. We did a portion of it, uh, two years ago and we did a portion of it this post-July one. So, um, going forward, there's no reserve account for that particular area to be supporting our, uh, salary line item.
That account has been closed.
That one's been closed, stabilization, okay. And, uh, while we're on, uh, under the manager's report, a couple other questions. The lights that we asked or I asked, but I think the council also agreed with it at Vet Square. Well, they'll be, those will be installed before the holiday parade.
Wes has been working on that. We've actually had a couple of lights that have been out and, and Kevin's been helping with the, um, the private ownership of the lights and the Burrito Me and the, uh, the jeweler's parking lot there. So we're working with those private owners. Um, we also had a few with the up lightings on some of the monuments that were not operating that have been addressed and I believe are now working or will be working in the near future. We've identified them. And the other area that we've made a request in with EverSource and we're trying to prioritize this because now we own our streetlights with the L E D conversion of putting one on that corner as well. So a couple of things in the works. One of the things that Wes has been cautioning me is we don't necessarily want it overly bright because once we get through that day with the parade and that's. because once we get through that day with the parade, and that's usually the time when people are standing there for the tree lighting ceremony, but then the tree gets lit. And if it's too bright, then you lose some of the wow factor of the tree being illuminated for the rest of the season, so we're striking the balance, but those are three things we're working on with the private owners, with the uplighting and the monuments and with Eversource.
I think it looks better if it isn't lit.
Okay, um, and the other thing I want to bring up.
I'm sorry, can I back up? So as you recall, a year or so ago, we've changed the tradition and we've got a tree that comes in fresh cut and, and got, gets installed there. So Kevin Dunlevy has lined up a tree that is coming, uh, from pretty close by that he went out and inspected and is a great donation. And I, I forget the folks' name who are donating it right now, but, um, it's all set to come in and be installed and it's a more manageable tree to have.
So we won't light the big one, we'll just light that?
We didn't light the big one last year, we had a new tree right there in the same spot and, um, we've got an appropriate tree coming to do that same routine this year.
Okay, um, the other quick, uh, comment would be, uh, for the last few years, I've been trying to get a price on what it would cost for countdown lights at the intersections. And Wes kind of gave a ballpark figure, uh, at the last meeting, uh, to upgrade our crosswalks, so that is a, a number associated with how long you've got to cross the street. So what I would like to do, and it would be up to the council, but I want to make a motion that the, I guess I could include them all, the Court Street intersection, Busy Corner intersection and Guilford Ave intersection be upgraded uh, at the time of construction in those areas. Next year, we're doing Court, uh, Court Street, we're redoing Court Street, so, uh, monies could be taken out of that job, uh, to upgrade just the signal countdown lights, not the whole intersection, but to install those countdowns, so, um, and then once we do, the year after, when we do Union Avenue, um, we could do, because that's going all the way to Guilford Ave. Do Busy Corner and the Guilford Ave intersection with the countdown lights, so I'm making that as a motion. And it could be seconded or not, but, uh, I think it's time that we, uh, we get that done.
Can you let us bring you some specifics on the cost of that first so that the council is, has got the full information? Because my understanding is once we go in and start to make any upgrades to the signals, we are required by law to go in and make the entire intersection ADA compliant, which is including tip downs and a lot of different things to it as well, so I don't want to say to you, yes, we can certainly just put the countdown signals on there, because my understanding is if we go in and are working in there, it brings everything up to current status and that can be some significant cost, so. I certainly will take your suggestion and put it in numbers and I'm not objecting to you making a motion, but I would like to get clear myself first as to make sure we're on the same page with what we're talking about.
Didn't Wes say that there wasn't money in the road construction for the lights?
I think that was a request of if we were, could place one at, uh, at Fair Street and Court Street, at that intersection, which came up at the meeting we were at. And the answer was, there was not money to put any kind of a signal there and that would be in the area of a couple hundred thousand dollars. What we potentially could do in anticipation of somewhere down the road is run some conduit and that type of stuff. So if we got to the point doing it, we could have conduit in the road in place, um, for possible future. So I'm, I'm, I'm not disagreeing necessarily councillor Hamel with what you're asking, I'm just saying there may be more pieces that I would just like you to be fully aware and how we, what the cost would be and where we're going to identify those funds from, because I don't think it's going to be an insignificant amount of money.
Could you have that for the next meeting?
I believe we can.
Because the, uh, the figure thrown out was twenty-five thousand and, uh.
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Was it? No, no, that was to upgrade the whole intersection. So I'm talking just lights.
Yeah, I, I just want to, I just.
I don't understand why you'd have to upgrade the whole intersection to put a light. Most, that whole, all those sidewalks are tip downs.
I just want to verify with you on what the requirements are because there may be some other challenges there. And I don't, and we can do it regardless of whether or not we do it, but the intention is not to be paving Court Street all the way from the intersection at Main Street, we're starting somewhere further down.
I understand.
More than likely, but, so let me just get some detailed information for you and no problem with the council taking that position and that's something that will identify funds, um, if that's a priority for the council.
Yeah, I see no reason why it can be part of the job, you know, it's a, we got a two point five million dollar project, so. Uh, if it's twenty-five thousand like Wes thinks it might be for the lights, then I think we can find that in that two point five million.
I just want to give you a number where you mentioned doing it at Busy Corner and on Guilford Ave as well, I just wanted to.
That would be for the following project, so. Okay, I'll read, I'll withdraw my motion till next meeting.
Okay, thank you. I think that'll conclude my report unless there's any other questions.
One more. LED, have we ever received a hundred thousand dollar, uh, rebate?
Yep, we have, and that brought the total cost of the project, uh, right down to where we had estimated the budgeting for, so it was a three hundred and fifty or sixty thousand dollar project and we had a hundred thousand dollar rebate came and applied and, some of the, um, adjustments to the billing based on when some of those lights went on live back, back to last February, March, April, May, or maybe even March, April, May when they went on, a lot of those credits have rolled through now, so we've actually seen zero bills because we've got the credit carrying forward from that coming through with the paperwork to Eversource, so everything worked like we expected it to.
Is there anything, um, I know we have the, uh, community development grant, uh, for the equipment for the Colonial Theater, is there anything new in terms of, uh, closing of the financing that, uh, to report on?
I was speaking with Justin Slattery, who's the executive director for Belene PDC of the day and he can certainly chime in. Everything appears to be on track, we're waiting for confirmation on when the final funds for the new market's tax credits are going to be released, but it's a new round of funding that we're expecting very soon, but not a date specific yet at this point. Um, but all expectation are is that everything that we can control is, uh, is in place and in the queue. And just that announced, which is through a federal program of those new market tax credits, they're just awaiting the final date, but I guess the positive thing is we have been in discussions with more than one bank on that and, um, it's the new money and we're definitely shovel-ready and ready to utilize it, so it's, um, you know, we're, we're, we're ready to hit the ground running with it.
Any word on the police grant?
We have not heard on that one yet, I was just talking with Chief Cantle the other day, we would expect to hear on that, um, any day now and again, that's a federal grant and different things happening budget-wise and stuff down there, but no, we have not heard anything.
Is there any, uh, I know it depends on the, uh, the grants that, uh, the city managers talked about, but when do you think we're going to start seeing some action over there?
We're, we've made a lot of good progress in the last couple of months, um, I think this winter we're going to start seeing some action there. Uh, we are, um, every Tuesday having a call, um, with, with the, what's called the new market tax credit update basically for this new allocation. Um, and so as, as Scott said, um, we're expecting that allocation, uh, to come out sometime in December, January, and then we'll be ready to go. Um, and we've lined up the other funding and one of the discussions tonight, the community development block grant is one of, one of those final pieces as well.
The, um, construction contractors are all ready to go?
Uh, they are working through, um, um, final design changes, some of the, some of the work on Canal Street, um, that I mentioned to Scott last week, that what they were looking at, um, finishing up drawings and plans for some of the, some of the additional work that's been budgeted into the project, you know, based on the support of the city. And also the theater equipment and its load on the theater and finalizing that, um, design work as well. So we're, we're making good progress and we're, we're basically, um, new market tax credits, we're waiting on that new allocation of three billion dollars, these credits that go out, hopefully in the next month, you know, is what we're, what, what, what the latest updates are, so. Thank you.
Everybody all set now? Okay, we got quite a stack coming up here. Uh, under new business. Building permit on a private road for thirty-eight Pendleton Beach Road. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Councillor?
Move to approve the request for a building permit on a private road for thirty-eight Pendleton Beach Road with the condition that all the pertinent permits are obtained.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Lipman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, I'll raise your hand. We got quite a pile of these, uh, ladies and gentlemen out there, so it's going to take a while to get through this. Uh, request for a building permit for a private road for forty-six Lucerne Avenue.
I'll make that motion. I move to approve the building permit for the forty-six Lucerne Avenue as requested contingent upon receiving all permits required by the city.
I'll second.
Second by councillor Hammond. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, put your hand up. Motion carries. Five votes. Okay, resolution twenty seventeen thirty?
That's been tabled.
That's the one that's been tabled. Okay, I'll keep that one separate, I guess, okay. Next is the, um, authorization to boat dealers to act as agents for the city of Laconia. For this motion, I move to allow the revenue, the renewal of the boat agent agreement with state of New Hampshire, DMV, with the seat of Laconia, boat dealers. I move to allow the city clerk to sign the boat agent agreements in behalf of the city of Laconia. There's quite a stack here.
Yeah, I'll make that motion on the, um, first one, the boat agreement, uh, with the state of New Hampshire and DMV with the city of Laconia and boat dealers.
I'll second that.
Have a second.
Do you want to just, for the benefit of the public, um, just outline the, the various ones that are available?
Sure, we have several local, uh, marinas and boat dealers, Pogus Bay Marina, Thurston's Marina, Channel Marine, Irwin Marine, Lakeport Landing and Watermark Marine who act as boat agents, so in addition to folks being able to register, uh, boats here at City Hall, regardless of where they live, they can also register boats. Um, and it's a good opportunity for us to partner with these businesses and it allows for some evening registrations or weekend registrations, possibly when, uh, City Hall isn't open as well, so it's a good partnership.
And additionally, is my understanding still that a greater proportion of the registration fee stays locally if they do it that way?
You are correct, the lion's share stays locally versus doing a mail-in registration or a walk-in registration at the state level. So we do encourage people to register locally.
Mayor Protem?
Yes. I move, uh, to allow the city clerk to sign a boat agent agreement on behalf of the city of Laconia.
I'll second that.
Second, okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries, all right. Request to authorize Mayor Protem Baldic to sign the agreement of the lease on arrangement and assumption of lease and a notice of assumption of lease, lease between Sky Riders LLC and Laconia Airport Authority.
So we have Marv Beverson here from the airport tonight, if you're looking for some background.
Hey, would you like to bring us up to date on that?
Sure, what this has to do with is, uh, a simple purchase of, uh, one individual wanting to purchase a hangar that is owned by another individual. And, uh, in so doing, the lease would merely be assumed. The existing lease would be carried over to the new owner. But it requires, uh, not only the, the, uh, Laconia Airport Authority to approve it, but the city council as well. And then the signature in your case of the mayor Protem, to be able to, uh, sign this and give approval for it so that we can move forward on it.
Yes.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Second? All in favor, say aye. I'll raise your hand. Motion carries, five votes. Okay, now we have a s-. Okay, that takes care of that.
Right, but we've got three more that we'll keep Marv up on here, so if you just want to read the next title, we can keep Marv, Marv busy tonight.
Request to authorize Mayor Protem Baldic to sign a lease agreement between the city of Laconia, Laconia Airport Authority and seventy-three Aviation Drive Hangar Association.
What this involves is a, uh, lease agreement that has expired. Forty years with this, uh, particular hangar association, the, uh, the lease expired and we re- are renewing the lease. So again, same, same type of situation, we have agreed, uh, come to an agreement on the lease. We need approval from city council for the mayor Protem to sign so that we can again move forward on a new lease with seventy-three Aviation Drive Hangar Association.
Yes. Um, I'll make that motion, uh, Mayor Protem.
I'll second.
All in favor of that motion, signify by raising your hand. Five in favor. Motion carries. The next one. Request to authorize the mayor Protem Baldic to sign the agreement to maintain and operate the fuel farm, the agreement is between the city of Laconia, Laconia Airport Authority, Southeast Gas Company, also known as Sky Bright, one of the fixed base operators at the airport.
Correct, and what this has to do with is, uh, Sky Bright, one of the, one of the FBOs operates, both of our FBOs operate fuel farms, but in this case, Sky Bright, um, the fuel farm agreement expired and we are renewing it along with the next item, which will be their lease. Again, we need the approval of the city council to renew this agreement to operate a fuel farm.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Second by councillor Doyle. No further discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, request to authorize Mayor Protem Baldic to sign a lease agreement between the city of Laconia, Laconia Airport Authority, Southeast Gas Company, also known as Sky Bright, one of the fixed base operators at the airport.
And this is the final of, uh, renewing a lease agreement with Sky Bright or known as Southeast Gas Company. Their lease agreement expired forty years and in, um, in, in duration. It expired, we are renewing it and again, we need the approval of the city council to sign that agreement.
I have a, someone wants to make that one.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Councillor Lipman. No further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Carries, five to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, motion to approve a council representative to Deborah Biana's award committee.
This mayor?
Yes.
I move to appoint councillor Ava Doyle. She will?
I'll be here.
Ava Doyle as the city council's representative to the Deborah Biana's award committee?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Bear. Any further discussion? None, all in favor, say aye, I'll put your hand up. Motion carries.
My pleasure.
Next, if I can get these separated, that's good, boy, it's a big one. A proposed application to the community development finance authority for up to five hundred thousand in community development block grant funds, the city will require some of the funds for administration costs and sub-grant the benefits of the remainder of L-Nap County Economic Development Council, cooperated for equipment for the Colonial Theater, redevelopment project located at six oh nine Main Street, Laconia, New Hampshire, oh three two four six. The majority of the jobs created with this project will be low and moderate income, this is the same one we had.
That was the public hearing and again, just to make sure, because Donna Lane is not here this night, tonight, and to make sure that, uh, we've got everything read into the record, if you'd like, I'd like to rattle this off quickly. Um, so community development block grant funds are available to municipalities through the New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority. Up to five hundred thousand annually is available on a competitive basis for public facility and housing projects. Up to five hundred thousand for economic development projects and up to three hundred and fifty thousand for emergency activities. All projects must directly benefit low and moderate income persons, up to twelve thousand dollars per study is available for planning grants. A proposed application to the community development finance authority for up to five hundred thousand dollars in community development block grant funds. The city will retain some of the funds for administration costs and sub-grant the benefits of the remainder to Belneb County Economic Development Council for equipment for the Colonial Theater redevelopment project. Colonial Theater redevelopment project located at six oh nine Main Street, Laconia, oh three two four six. The majority of the jobs created with this project will be low and moderate income. This project conforms with Laconia's Housing and Community Development's plan's goal of encourage economic development activities to increase quality industrial and commercial development, encourage the expansion and retention of employment opportunities for residents, both short-term and long-term.
Yes.
Mayor Potem, I move to approve the submittal of the application and authorize, and to authorize the city manager to sign and submit the application, and upon approval of the CDBG, the application authorize the city manager to execute any document which may be necessary to effectuate the CDBG contract and any amendments to thereto.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Doyle. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, put your hand up.
Aye.
Five in favor. Okay, unanimous, cool. Wow, somebody's... Housing and Community Development Plan. I move to adopt and update Housing and Community Development Plan and authorize the city manager to sign.
Is there anything you have to add to that, Scott?
Nope, I think the plan is there, I don't think we need to read the entire planning.
Make that motion.
Do I have a second? Counselor Hamill? Okay, no further discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Five votes in favor. All right. Presidential Anti-Development Plan. Move to adopt the anti-development and...
Displacement?
Replacement, excuse me. And Relocation Assistance Plan and authorize the city manager to sign. Would you like to speak to that?
And again, we've got on page sixty-seven that plan, but as we identified earlier, we're not anticipating any displacement by this, so it's a requirement of the application. So we will be signing it, but we're not anticipating any displacement or relocation.
I'll make that motion.
Second by Counselor Doyle. No further discussion?
Sorry, if we could just read so we can get the language to say the displacement and authorize the city manager to sign, I think that's important, that that goes under the record, Counselor.
I thought he read that.
Oh, you did. I'll read it. I move to adopt the anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan and authorize the city manager to sign.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Resolution twenty seventeen dash twenty-five relative to authorizing the city manager to accept and expend a grant on behalf of the city in the amount of nine thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and four cents from the Laconia Distracted Driving Grant Project three eighteen dash eighteen B dash oh one two.
Scott, should we read into the discussion at all, or can we just go to the...
I think you can go right to the motion.
Okay. I move to approve resolution two twenty seventeen dash twenty-five relative to authorizing the city manager to accept and expend a grant on behalf of the city council in the amount of nine thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and four cents from the, from the Laconia Distracted Driving Grant Project number three one eight dash eighteen B dash zero one two.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Doyle, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Five, motion carries. Resolution twenty seventeen dash twenty-six relative to authorizing the city manager to accept and expend a grant on behalf of the city in the amount of thirteen thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars from the Laconia W...
DWI.
Patriots, Patriots Grant Project three oh eight dash eighteen B dash oh seventeen.
I'll move to approve resolution two thousand seventeen twenty-six relative to the authorizing, to authorizing the city manager to accept and expend a grant on behalf of the city in the amount of thirteen thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars from the Laconia DWI Patrols Grant Project number three oh eight dash eighteen B dash zero one seven.
Second.
Second by Counselor Hamill. No further discussion, hearing none, raise your hand, all in favor. Unanimous. Resolution twenty seventeen dash twenty-seven relative to authorizing the city manager to accept and expend a grant on behalf of the city in the amount of one thousand thirty-one dollars and fifty cents from the Laconia Radar Grant Project three fifteen dash eighteen B dash oh four one.
I'll move to approve resolution two thousand seventeen dash twenty-seven relative to authorizing the city manager to accept and expend a grant on behalf of the city in the amount of one thousand thirty-one dollars and fifty cents from the Laconia Radar Grant Project number three one five dash eighteen B dash zero four one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Counselor Lippman, second. All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Okay, carries, unanimous. Resolution twenty seventeen dash twenty-eight relative to authorizing the city manager to accept and expend to grant on beha, a grant on behalf of the city in the amount of twelve thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-seven cents on the Laconia Step Grant Project three fifteen dash eighteen B dash oh twenty-two. Do I have a second?
I'll move to approve resolution, resolution two thousand seventeen dash twenty-eight relative to authorizing the city manager to accept and expend a grant on behalf of the city in the amount of twelve thousand six seventy-one seventy-seven from the Laconia Step Grant Project number three one five dash eighteen B dash zero two two.
All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Five in favor?
Need a second?
Okay.
You got it.
Resolution twenty seventeen dash twenty-nine relative to authorizing the city manager to accept and expend a grant on behalf of the city in the amount of seven thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty-three cents from the Laconia Sobriety Checkpoint Grant Project three oh eight dash eighteen B dash oh eighty-nine. Do I have a second?
I'll make that motion to approve resolution twenty-seven, I mean, two thousand seventeen dash twenty-nine relative to authorizing the city manager to accept and expend a grant on behalf of the city in the amount of seven thousand three eighty-one point sixty-three from the Laconia Sobriety Checkpoints Grant.
Okay, second. Counselor Doyle. No further comments, all in favor, raise your hand. Five in favor. Motion carries. Update on city flyer codes.
Mayor, I think, based on the options that were presented to us earlier, rather than extending the public hangar, I'd suggest we table it, to bring it up at the next meeting for vote consideration.
That'd be no problem.
Be no problem.
Okay, do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Hamill. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, keep that one up. All right, hold Toledo. Where are we?
Counselor comments. We're done.
What page are we on? We're all done?
No. Page seven.
Page seven?
Page seven, twenty-two, Counselor comments.
Oh. All right, Counselor comments. Brenner? Counselor Baer?
I got a few, but I think I'll just go with one. I was very, I, it was, it's been a busy three weeks since we had our last meeting between the storm and the election and everything else, and then at the polls, there were, you get a chance to talk to the public one-on-one and hear their concerns, and they, they have a lot. But the one that was most outstanding was the vapor shop, which is opening next door to the high school.
Well, that's the, the one that's opening up?
Yes, the sign is out there, it says vapor shop, and it's the building one over from the high school. Just seems like an inappropriate place. I wonder how or what... This zoning, just because it's commercial, allow anything?
Yes, if it's a permitted use within that zone...
Do you mean to tell me there's actually a code that says vapor shops?
Retail of, it could be a retail storefront, which is basically what it is. It happens to be selling, you know, pipe materials and materials used for vaping, but it's a legal product that they're selling.
So it may be legal, but it doesn't seem like the right place to...
Is there one right next to Busy Corner? Isn't that one right there?
Yes, there's a big one there, and this is another one, you know...
Wouldn't it be excluded? They'd have to exclude it?
It's the high school.
Not so much include, not so much include, things that exclude.
One at a time.
My apologies.
I, I believe it would fall under a general retail category, so when you look at some of the permitted uses, there are different zones, obviously, there are different types of uses, so, you know, nightclubs and restaurants, you know, maybe in one zone where, you know, retail could occur, but it doesn't mean that a nightclub could occur in a business district or a retail zone as well. You can get into, you know, different types of industries, you know, some that come to mind are adult-themed ones that are in certain zones, but those are characterized for that specific reason. But I think the vape shop is definitely a relatively new industry, speaking, as far as, you know, coming on, on the front burner in a lot of communities. But it is a, it is a retail store, and it's the same zone as the one that opened at Busy Corner, I believe. I have to double-check, but we have a couple of districts there, but I believe it's the same zoning there, and just because we would prefer not to see that use next to a high school, and I agree with you, doesn't mean that we could arbitrarily tell them, no, they cannot operate there.
Yes.
I think, I think I brought it up once at, at the last meeting, but I, I want to commend our Fire Department, Police Department, Public Works Department for the great job they did during the bad weather we had, and I'm sure they were up for long hours doing what they needed to do, so I want to thank them very much for their effort and all they did.
It was, it was a tough one. I was out of power for four days, and the only thing I got out of it is I went to bed at six o'clock at night. Instead of eleven, and, but I woke up same, the same time at three in the morning, so it was, it was quite a, quite an ordeal to be held for that amount of time. A lot of people have been out a lot longer, but it's, luckily, the weather wasn't that bad, and you could, you could survive in that kind of weather, but you never know what's going to happen. It's just unbelievable. Anything else to come before the council this evening? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Move to adjourn by Counselor Hamill, do I have a second? Counselor Doyle, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I don't even think we have to vote on that. New rules. Thank you all for coming. All, all six of you.